All right, I am going to start recording the meeting and call it to order. Give me a moment.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm going to call it to order. This is the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. And I'm going to start with some explanations and instructions in light of the fact that we're working with this go-to-meeting system. As many of you are in your homes, if your microphone is not muted, if your microphone is not muted, please be conscious of the noise around you. Microphones are on different devices, have different levels of sensitivity. Therefore, the television in an adjacent room for the entertainment of your family may interfere with this meeting. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if I acknowledge or recognize you. If there is an exchange going on between a presenter and a questioner, each of you must finish speaking before the responding person can start. I do not have a traditional wooden gavel with me at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully or appropriately, I'll be forced to mute all so that the person who has the floor can be heard. If I mute all while you are speaking, please be patient. I will allow you to resume speaking as soon as reasonably possible. For members of the public who want to be heard during the public meeting or the public portions of this meeting, please pay attention. There is a chat bar that you can open by clicking on the icon that looks like a cartoon speech bubble. When I call for public comment, please type into the chat bar that you would like to speak. Members of the public who have logged in to just watch, if you don't intend to participate in the meeting, please turn off your camera. Last meeting, we were blessed with the view of someone's dining room chandelier for the whole meeting. If you've dialed in the toll-free number and are listening through a traditional telephone, I have no way to identify you. There's no identifying information. You are referred to as caller number. In some of the pre-meeting, I've identified several of the people who were calling in. And so I know who they are by number, but there are, at this point, about four callers. I have no idea who you are. And I'll figure out some way to see if I can allow you to speak. Those who log into the meeting through a smartphone or a computer do select a screen name. If you have called in and would like to comment, I'm going to have to go through each of the listed callers for the telephone numbers to ask you if you'd like to speak. Anyone speaking as a member of the public, you must identify yourself by providing us with your name and address. For those of you viewing the meeting, the agenda materials are posted on the town website. There is a tab on the right side, second below the heading "This Week's Meetings." With that, we will head on to the agenda. And we will first rise for a moment of silence before the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
indivisible, with liberty,
justice for all. All right. You can all get comfortable at home again. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Fishby?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Shortel?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Thank you. Attorney Farrell?
Here.
Jim Bose?
Here.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Calling the agenda on to item number three, the consent agenda. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through L.
Second.
Madam Clerk, did you get the second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. And at this point, because we have Attorney Fozzie for a limited amount of time, I'm going to skip ahead to item six to hold the public hearing on the bonding ordinance for community pool. I hereby convene public hearing for the $7,470,000 appropriation and bond authorization for the Wallingford Community Pool Park project consisting of an amendment to the existing $625,000 ordinance previously adopted. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. In actuality, may be obtained by looking at the town's website. There are motion and a second to read the title of the ordinance and waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporated, incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Laffin, seconded by Shortel. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it. The motion passes. An ordinance, amending an ordinance appropriating $625,000 for Community Pool Park Design Services and authorizing the issue of $625,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and funding the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. This is the portion where we open up to comments from the public. If you could please open the chat bar on my screen. It's on my right. It might be on your left. There's a comic strip text bubble. If you could click on that and type in your name that you'd like to speak. We'd like to give the public the opportunity to speak. All right, Ms. McKean, you've asked a comment and you just need to unmute your microphone.
In spite of the COVID pandemic, I support going forward with the Community Pool project.
And?
Is I supposed to give my address too? Eileen McKean, 13 Berkhite Drive. Thank you. Eileen McKean, 13 Berkhite Drive. I still support going through with the project.
All right, we've had one comment from the public. Any other comments from the public? Going once. Once I close the public hearing, that will be the opportunity for the public to comment on this proposed ordinance. And is there anybody who's having trouble, confused? All right. It being five minutes since I've opened the public hearing. And as evidenced by Ms. McKean's comment, the public has the ability to comment and have been given the ability to comment. If there is no further public comment, I will close the public hearing. All right. At this point, is there a motion and a second to amend the Community Pool parking ordinance and adopt it as amended? So moved.
I will second.
And from whom was the second?
Vinnie Testa, Town Counselor.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I just, my audio went out for a bit. I had to go to a different medium. Can you just, I don't know what the motion is or what the amendment is. The, as nothing further than that was stated or no further clarification was stated, the motion is to, is for an ordinance amending, an ordinance appropriating $625,000 for Community Pool Park Design Services and authorizing, I'm sorry, and authorizing the issue of $625,000 in bonds. Counselor Shortel, the amendment should be an ordinance appropriating $7,470,000 for the Community Pool project and authorizing the issue of $7,470,000 bonds of the town to meet such appropriation, ending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Counselor Shortel, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Thank you.
Right, oh yeah, I'd like to comment, but I'll wait for the motion. I should probably wait for the motion to pass and wait for you to do that.
All right, and Counselor Testa, does that change your second?
Yes, sir, it does.
Does it change it or are you still seconding the motion?
I'm sorry, I am seconding the motion as Counselor Shortel is presenting it.
Thank you.
I don't even know if I answered your question.
Okay. And Counselor Fishby, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. And at this point, I open it up to the council for comments. And I'd actually, and I understand that Counselor Shortel is ready to comment. And I would just ask, does anybody have question or comment for Attorney Fozzie regarding the bond issue? We only have him for seven more minutes, and that's why I ask. I see nothing in the chat bar. I see no hands waving at me. So all indicators appear to be that we have no questions directed to Attorney Fozzie. And with that, I would acknowledge Counselor Shortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again, making sure you can hear me. I'm on a new headset, that's why I'm kind of paranoid. But I will assume you can hear me unless otherwise you otherwise indicate it. All right, thank you. Well, I just want to start, this has been a long process, and I'm not really sure how it's going to go tonight, but I just wanted to give my two cents. And I do want to start, we have Mr. Savinelli, I think, on the line. And I want to start by thanking him, thanking the Parks and Rec Commission for all the work that they've done over the last, I want to say it's been two years. It feels like it's been that long on this project. So definitely want to thank the mayor for getting it this far as well. Because we couldn't have come to where we are tonight without the mayor either. Understanding his most recent recommendation, which I will address. I think that there's a lot of factors to consider with this pool. I've talked to a lot of, as we all have, I've talked to a lot of residents, heard some arguments for it, arguments against it over the last two years. And I just, I just would like to walk through some of those arguments tonight. And just as a rationalization for why I actually do support moving forward with this. But first, I just want to talk about the cost. So we just bonded for about $7.4 million. This project is actually about a $6.8 million project. The additional money is contingency. So that is being built in, and that's standard on big projects. But I think it's important to remember that we may not spend that money. Some projects, many projects do go over, and you need that contingency. In this instance, we're putting a pool in where a pool already exists. We're not digging a new hole or we're, you know, we're dealing with, I think, a lot more knowns than we usually do. So I just want to make that clarifying point. I view this as a $6.8 million project. I think it's important to know, we just had a turn to Fozzie on the line. We're bonding this. We're not taking money out of the general fund or the rainy day fund, as some people call it. According to calculations by Mr. Bose that he sent to the council a day or two ago, the impact of this annually on the town over a 20-year bond would be about $400,000 a year. So this translates to about $17 a year over the same time period on average for the average taxpayer in town. And that assumes we bond the full 7.4, that assumes the whole thing, which we likely will not need all of it. So I think that's just an important thing to consider. When people talk about the cost, it's $6 million, it's $7 million. Yes, it's a lot of money, but we do have an excellent credit rating. And that's what the actual impact is to our budget. We are not rating our savings account to do this. We're not jacking up taxes to do it. $17 a year in the average household over 20 years would also add about 7% to our existing debt service. We have about $5.8 million in debt service budget for next year. That amount's going to fluctuate, so I had to base it off something, and that's about what it would add. So that's just, just want to lay out the costs. So I just want to get into some of the arguments I've heard for and against this pool. And I'm sorry, thank you for bearing with me. I don't mean to go long here, but I am passionate about this. One argument I've heard is government shouldn't spend money on pools. Someone actually said that to me. One person said it. And I understand that argument. And I understand that if you're a limited government person, you don't want to see money spent on a pool. My only response to that is we're going to have to agree to disagree. We've had a pool in this town for 50 years. It's been a great tradition. It's part of what makes Wallingford special. Government does spend money on parks and on many amenities that are not necessarily essential services. So sure, if we didn't have a pool, would we be putting one in? Probably not, but we do have one. That's the reality we're dealing with. We've had one for, really for generations in town. Another argument that I've heard is nobody uses the pool. It's too much money to spend. So let's get into that a little bit. Before the near drowning in 2012, we averaged about 5,000 pool tags sold per year. There was a near drowning. I was actually there that day with my family. Luckily, the child survived. But that led to some stricter enforcement of pool passes. And the average dipped to about 1,800 pool tags sold. Although last year with the expanded season, we'd take it up to 2,700 tags sold. It's an important thing to consider that all we did last year was we added weeks to the season. Yep.
Chris, can you just pause for a moment? All right, I'm sorry, I wanted to clean up the audio. Resume, please.
I appreciate that, yeah. I appreciate that. It's one of those anti-pool people trying to distract me. Let me start over. No, I'm kidding, I'm not going to start over. Thank you, Vinnie, I appreciate that. The pool passes last year increased. And I think that that's significant because they increased with the pool and the condition it's in, which it, look, Parks and Rec, Public Works has a great job trying to get it going. But the paint is peeling, the pool deck is slippery, the bathhouses are a disaster. Even in the condition it's in, we got the pool passes up to 2,700. Imagine what a new pool would generate in terms of usage and interest. So I don't buy this argument. Nobody uses it. And I also think that that argument doesn't really take into account that our town has a number of wonderful amenities that are geared towards specific slices of the population. And you can make that same argument about any number of things in town, that not everyone uses it. Whether it's the senior center, or it's the library, or it's some of the, even the other Parks and Rec programs they run. And so I think that that's, that argument, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't really fly. We spend about $5 million in our budget on things like the library, the senior center, the park and rec budget combined. So we do spend that money in town already on some wonderful programs. And I think the pool is part of that fabric. It's part of those programs. And I think it adds value. Another argument that I think you're probably going to hear tonight is this pool is too small. We should delay it on that, and those, we should delay it and get something better. And whether it's, you know, we should get more à la carte options. We should, we should have six lap lanes, not four, as is being proposed. And I understand, I am sympathetic to those arguments. And this is a tempting argument, tempting reason to delay it. But I think the fact is that the pool that's proposed tonight, it's more than a pool, it's a park. It's an entire destination with a splash pad and with a picnic pavilion. It's nothing like, we have nothing like this in town right now. It enhances that piece of property. And so yes, make no mistake, this is a smaller pool. I do recall though, and someone can correct me on this, but we had a meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission when they presented this to us, I think in the fall, the last time they presented. And the consultant said that the pool we have now, which is about 40,000 square feet, is the largest municipal pool in the Western Hemisphere. So make no mistake, we were never getting the pool we have now. No one was going to come in and build a new pool for us that mirrored the pool that we have today. That was never happening. What, some options were floated, no pun intended. Early on, I think the 12,000 foot square pool was floated, 13,000 foot pool. So we're down to about 8,000 feet with the lap pool. I understand some people would like it bigger. I tell you, if you delay the pool today, it dies. It's gone. You're not getting it back. And I firmly believe that. I think we have a wonderful opportunity here. We have a great property, a great enhancement. And I don't want to see it lost over some well-intentioned people who want to delay it to try and get something better. You know, I did go, and I don't know if anybody else went. I sent an email to the town council on December 4th. I went to two pools in West Hartford that the pool commission had said were comparable pools to what they are proposing to build here. Beechland Park and Fernridge Park. I unfortunately picked the only day in the winter that there was snow on the ground. It was, it was after we had a storm and they got hit up there a little harder than we got hit down here. So it wasn't maybe the best day to go, but I had time. And while I was concerned when I went over the size of those pools, I also saw that those parks were so great. And the whole package there, from the, from what you could see, from the splash pad they had there and the bathhouses, it was just something that I know that if we had that in Wallingford, if we enhanced the community pool property, it would be such a destination and such an attraction. So that just convinced me further. I did have concerns and I did go to the planning and zoning meeting that month to express those concerns publicly. I had discussions behind the scenes. Look, that was a year ago or two years ago. It's not now. That ship has sailed. So I don't, with all due respect to that argument, I don't, I can't support that reason to delay the pool. I think for $17 per average household per year, we're getting a significant upgrade. The final argument I've heard, and maybe it's the most important one, is that we should delay this because of the uncertainty around COVID-19. Certainly, people are out of work. Our economy is completely halted. We've had radical measures to curb this virus's spread. And the mayor actually outlined these concerns in a letter he just sent to the council. He sent this letter on April 22nd, when we got our council packet that we get before our meetings. And you, this was reported on page one of the Record Journal today. And I, look, I respect those concerns. I respect the mayor and I appreciate his position. You know, there's nobody more passionate than the mayor about keeping expenses low for our community. And he's the one, the buck stops with him. You know, he has to tell departments or the public that we can't spend money on this or that. You know, people aren't going to the mayor with ways to save money. Hey, mayor, we want to spend less money. They're only, they're only going to the mayor with requests for more money. So he has to be the one to ensure that we have sustainability for the future. I respectfully disagree, though, that because of COVID, we need to delay this. And I specifically disagree with the mayor pointing this out in this letter. And the reason I do this is that the mayor actually sent us two letters. Mayor sent us an email on April 13th, only a week before. And in that letter, the mayor didn't mention COVID. He wrote, "Given the amount of increase over the discussed $6 million budget, we should make efforts to reduce the cost." So there was no reference to the economy or COVID. Then a week later, we did get the second letter, which is all about COVID, all about the economy. You know, from, I don't know what changed from April 13th to April 22nd. Because frankly, on April 13th, COVID was just as much of a crisis as it was a week later. I completely respect and understand the mayor's concern with this cost, the project's cost. But I do not agree or support bringing in this current crisis the way that it was brought in in a second letter as an excuse to delay this project. I don't think the town undertaking this project in any way signals that we're unaware of future economic uncertainties or that it puts us in an adverse financial position. As I mentioned before, we're not touching a penny of our general fund. We're bonding this at a time when interest rates will never be lower. $17 over 20 years to the average taxpayer, 7% to our annual debt service. So I've spent a lot of reasons talking about what I, the reasons I've heard not, for not doing this project. Let me be clear, the majority of people I've talked to over the last two years, whether it was at the grocery store or at a swim meet or just out and about in town, have been supportive of this project. Like this pool is a valuable part of the fabric of our town and has been such a great thing for generations, and it will be going forward. But make no mistake about it, and you can all disagree with me, you can tell me I'm wrong, but I think if we vote this down tonight, if we delay it, even with the best of intentions, this project's dead. It's gone. We're not getting six lap lanes. We're getting zero lap lanes. So it's only going to get more expensive if we delay it. And I don't think any of these factors are going to get better in a year or two years. So with all due respect, I am fully supportive of this project as proposed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
Certainly. Next is Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Give me a second. All right, you're on.
All right, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, perfect, thank you. So I'd like to echo some of the sentiments, actually all the sentiments that Counselor Shortel just brought up. I think it's very important for all of us to acknowledge, and I think we all do, that there's going to be a number of issues with trying to pass something like this when we're talking about the type of year we're probably coming up upon. And I think as an add-on to that, I am comfortable telling all the taxpayers that, like I've tried to do in the past, I'm going to be continuing to work towards making sure there's no increase this year. Or if we have to have an increase, that it's as low as possible. We've done this in other years. I voted against budgets that had an increase I didn't believe it was responsible to have. There's been other years where I've done the lesser of two evils and voted them through and so on. But like Counselor Shortel just outlined, there's a lot of reasons to do this now and try to bring it forward. To his points, $17 a year for the median-cost home in town is what this impact is going to be to the bonding, to paying the bonding part of this, this project. We do this already and all the other things that we either bond out or that we even have as part of a regular budget. The schools cost so much, the roads cost so much, paying for emergency services costs so much. What we contribute to the library costs so much. And all of these are different components. We were going to have to close down the pool for an entire season in order to do this work. This is the season to do it. No one would go anyway. Even if the general consensus was to lift everything on June 1st, people are still going to self-quarantine. They're still going to be going to self-quarantine. They're still going to be, uh, very cautious about getting together and grouped. So we would be down on pool passes this year without a doubt. So this is the perfect year to undertake for that particular part of the aspect. Um, like Counselor Shortell outlined, we are going from what is a pool today to really investing in this entire property as, as a park. I envision, as part of the discussion we've already had prior at other meetings, that the park that encompasses the pool will be open longer periods of the year. When we get those days, we get those random days in May where the, the pool may not be open yet, but it's ninety degrees, the splash pads might be available. People will be able to go and utilize it at other times of year, bring a lunch, sit down in some of the green areas and be able just to sit down and have something to eat. Um, and with respect to the size of the pool, I, I, I acknowledge that it'll be smaller than what it used to be, what we, what we are maybe used to having. But I think people have to understand a couple of different aspects to that. And one of them is that, A, much as the comment was born, if we had gone out and set up a project to do a pool today, we never would have installed one at the size that this one is. Another problem is that currently, with the current size of the pool, the amount of water and the systems to filtrate the entire pool area, when there's a biological
That's what I saw. Second from the right, bottom says C O.
I'll come back to you.
Vinnie, is there any way we could do this by phone instead?
Uh, I am trying to identify the source and trying
It looked like caller nine to me, but I can't be a hundred percent sure.
All right, we'll try that. All right.
It looked, it looks like that box is gone, Vinnie. If you did that, you were successful. Who knows?
No, I, I eliminated that caller. We'll have to be vigilant. And, uh, I'm sorry, Counselor Zandry, please resume the floor.
Sure. Looks like we have somebody else dialing back in, so we might be dealing with that. Um, try and pick up where, I lost my train of thought there. Um, one of the other points I'd like to make as well is that, you know, we talked about the size of the pool and the fact that, you know, it's, it's not going to be the same size that we currently have. I think we, we've all been at enough different vacation spots or different resorts where they've had smaller pools and they're very active. I think that the, the idea with this is that, you know, one of the other benefits of having a smaller area is presently today, when we have a biological incident at the pool, the amount of time that it takes to bring all the water through the system and infiltrate it properly, a lot of times it'll take the pool out for the entire remainder of the day based on whenever it might occur. So I think there's also advantages to bringing down the, the, the entire size of the pool, although I, I also acknowledge, as Counselor Shortell did, the potential for, you know, having a little bit smaller than we would like, maybe we'd like more lap lanes and so on. But, but again, I, I really believe that what we need to do is find a way to properly manage the cost of this. And I think we're doing that by getting the bids, by getting the project, by sending this out to bonding. And, and again, we've, we've continually throughout the years made a point of how great our bonding rate is, you know, uh, being the credit rating, credit worthiness that the town is. And to take advantage of that is, is a very smart thing to do. It pays this over time. Um, going back to the fact that there's going to be, um, this type of work in, in a time period of the year, uh, when there is going to be a lot of people out of work, it's going to allow us to get the very best bids on it. We're going to be able to utilize it when interest rates are at probably the historic lows that we've ever, we're ever going to see again. So I, I'm hoping that the, the, the counselors will, will support this so that we can, um, execute and bring this through to its natural conclusion. I think that when you look at the aspect that the town has had this thing for over fifty years, we always argue and talk about how we, we need to have more local things. Things, people, if the economy is going to be as bad as it's, it, as its outlook is right now, especially if it's extended, we're going to be looking at this for a year, two years or longer. People are going to be staying closer. They're going to be staying more local. They're not going to be going further away and, and traveling to take vacations. They're going to be at home and they're going to be looking for things to do. And this will be another thing to do. It'll be another feather in Wallingford's cap for something to have. So I, I'm really very hopeful that all of us can support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Zandry. Um, next, I'm going to take comment from Counselor Testa. I apologize to everyone for some of the interference we've seen, and I'm doing my best to stay on top of it. Um, and forgive me if, in the process of trying to eliminate the offensive content that, um, I, I don't respond to your speaking quickly enough. So, uh, Counselor Testa, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and, uh, nice job handling a very difficult situation. We'll track this person down. We'll find him. I had a few questions. One, just something just happened to pop up. Most of my questions are, are for the, uh, pool committee, so I'm assuming Mr. Savinelli can kind of answer these questions. Is that correct? You're not on, Mike.
Hang on. Mike is, can you try?
I'm on the phone. You can't hear me at all?
Thanks, Mike. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Fine. Thank you. Um, I'll forget to ask this, but the, with the new pool design, um, what is the, uh, what is the material being used for the, you know, the surface? Is it a concrete-based material and not asphalt?
Yeah, it's going to be concrete.
Thank you. That's that. Um, during the, um, all of the studies you've done and the, the work you've done, I just realized something. I had, I had some music in the background. I apologize if that was interfering. you have, did you have some figures as to what the, uh, percentage of, um, community usage might be for the pool based on what it has been? Uh, what, I'll let you know what I'm getting at. I'm trying to determine if there's a way we can foresee, uh, revenue from the pool at least exceeding the expenses for operating the pool to a point where we could say that it is contributing to the repayment of the bond costs to, to build the pool. And I know that everything goes into the general fund, but it's very easy to lay out a small spreadsheet and say, we're not losing money there. We're, 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 we're in the, we're in the black. And is there something by way of expected increases in usage, expected increases in, uh, revenue generated? And, you know, just projected numbers of that sort that you might be able to share that could address that question I had?
Uh, I believe there's a chance of that. I, we did do, you know, we did do our studies. We did talk to Michael Fortuna about the increase when you have the new pool, because everybody's looking forward to the splash pad. And we did a budget, came, came up with some numbers of what the pool tags would cost for us to, at minimum, take care of all the expenses, which will be less with this new pool than it is with the old pool. And, you know, my, my guess is there is a chance that we could have excess revenue that could be put towards that. But it was not, it was not built for that. And I think along the way, at one point, we were told that this was not supposed to be a pool for profit. Um, trying to remember who, who said that to me, but I don't really remember. But somebody did say, as long as we could pay for our expenses, we're in pretty good shape. So that's what we're planning on. And I think we, I think we could possibly exceed that and have some money in the general fund to be give back, but
Thank you. Well, I, I agree with the, uh, with the concept that, you know, we're, we didn't want to set this up in a way that it was considered a, a money-making revenue fund of the town. That makes perfect sense. Uh, but if we can demonstrate that the, uh, the new facility, especially with the potential, uh, increase in uses, aside from just going to get wet, um, you know, using it for, for concerts, using it for activities, picnics, those types of things, just if that would, if we could demonstrate that there's a, there's a high degree of confidence that we are going to at least, uh, cover the expenses to keep this thing operating and very likely, um, exceed that so that we'll know that there was some type of money going into the general fund that even indirectly is going to offset the expenses. So that was, that was my question. I have a note here. What was the, what did, you may or may not be able to answer this. I, I'm, I hope you can, because it might require Park and Rec. What are the, uh, are the estimates as to the ongoing costs of maintaining the existing pool on an annual basis?
Yeah, we have all of that. And I, uh, I think Kenny Michaels is on the call and Michelle. But I, I do remember the cost of running the pool was somewhere around a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
I, I'm on. This, uh, Councilman Tessis, Kenny Michaels.
Hi, Ken. Thanks.
No problem. So looking at the lifeguards, um, you know, out, out of our budget, you know, we, we budgeted this year eighty-four five, um, which has been, you know, we, we did as a, a worst-case scenario, which I believe is going to be coming out. Um, and that includes, you know, lifeguard supervisor, assistant supervisor. Um, the chemicals are, are close near thirty thousand, which comes out of the public works budget. Um, you know, paint annually is probably somewhere between five and six thousand dollars. Um, there's a maintenance contract for a third-party, uh, cleaning company that maintains, uh, the bathhouse. Um, so you're looking at probably, all said and done, the operation costs, I don't have the exact figure, but you're looking at between one sixty, one seventy.
That's overall operating expenses. And what was, what was your last couple of years' worth of revenue from pool tags?
Uh, let's see. So two thousand nineteen, we took in sixty thousand, three thirty.
About a hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
Correct.
Round numbers.
Hey, Kenny. Uh, Mr. Testa, Michelle from Park and Rec, if I can intervene for me. Uh, that's going from two thousand fifteen at thirty-four thousand to thirty-seven thousand to thirty-two thousand to forty-two thousand to sixty thousand in two thousand nineteen.
So as the years have gone on and the facility has deteriorated and for other reasons, there's been a lack of use, uh, the, the, the cost of keeping the facility open have gone up, if you will.
Correct.
That fair? Okay. Uh, what I was hoping for was that if we went forward with this and we have a, you know, shiny new facility with all these, uh, amenities and, and I'm thinking that, you know, as people talk about the, the predicament we find ourselves in with this pandemic and the changes in social structure and lord knows what's coming next. Um, I look a year down the road, excuse my horses, I look a year down the road and I say, um, if anything, boy, this is going to be something to look forward to for all these families that have, have had, been limited in what they can do. And just like a new amusement park opens up, this is going to be something that I would think people are going to want to swarm to. Um, and combine that with what I'm hoping will be, uh, you know, adjustments in the, the way you are, are selling tags, to whom you are selling tags, opening it up for day tags, all of these types of things. I, I think a, a, an overall strategy that you have discussed that would encourage, um, more use as well as honestly, you know, more revenue along with food trucks and all that, I, I would think that there would be a, a dramatic improvement in that cost-benefit analysis that, as you've said, for the last five years has been pretty dismal. So, um, I guess, I guess my conclusion would be, you know, we're looking at something that would be very positive on an annual basis versus just shutting it down. Because honestly, those are the two options I think we really have when all is said and done. And I don't believe that letting this facility die a slow death is, uh, is reasonable, uh, nor do I believe it is community-minded. And, uh, so I'd like to see us go forward. But I thank you all for your answers. Thanks for the time, Mr. Chairman. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Tada, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, just to start off, I want to say, um, in light of the recent economic crisis that's going on in the world, um, I just find this a very, um, a terrible time to be spending this type of money. Um, we have people who have lost their businesses, their livelihoods, um, record unemployment rate. Um, we could be going into another depression, the likes of which none of us have seen. And, um, you know, so we talk about, you know, maybe it's seventeen dollars a year or, you know, spread over time, it's not that much. But when people, you know, can't feed their families right now and they're losing their jobs, um, that's a major consideration. And so for me, the timing of this is, um, is not good. And I'm very concerned about, um, putting that on the taxpayers. That being said, um, I do have questions about the actual project and some comments. And, um, obviously, I'm the one counselor who was not involved in the process up to this point. So I'm coming into this late. Um, and so bear with me, please, because some of these questions, um, I probably would have asked, um, a while ago, but this is where I'm coming into it. So, um, I just have some questions now. Um, so I guess this question is for, um, whoever on the pool committee or Parks and Rec would like to answer. But my main question is, is every single aspect of what we have currently at Community Pool Park not salvageable? Because the new project basically demolishes everything and starts from scratch. And so I'm just wondering, is there anything there that we can salvage? Or is, um, is every single aspect of this a complete tear down?
Well, we will certainly salvage the covers. We have covers that people use to go under shade structures. We're going to salvage those. The bathhouse is so far out of compliance that even to try to bring that up to compliance would probably, would cost as much if not more. And, uh, so that, that's a problem. And the, you know, the system itself, the pool filtration system is extremely old. Um, this, just as a side, this is the third attempt in the last twenty-three years to try to get this pool to where we're trying to get it today. And as we've been doing this over the years, it's continued to disintegrate. And we have paint floating on top of the water and, and parts of the pool you can't go into. Um, it, it, it just doesn't make sense to proceed forward. And we did look at the aspect of saving. it just doesn't make sense to proceed forward. And we did look at the aspect of saving. And there's really nothing here other than the shade structures and obviously some of the equipment, um, some of the lifeguard stands, things of that nature. But the actual structure itself, uh, would have to be demolished to the ground and start fresh. Because we're going to be moving things around, having things like the school buses will be able now come into the parking lot and turn around where now we drop the kids off, we have to pull off to the side of the road, stopping traffic. So there's going to be a lot of things that are going to, you know, make this better and safer in so many ways as well. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I guess that leads me to, you know, kind of my analysis of this whole thing. So, um, I'm looking at the existing pool and then the proposed pool. Um, and I see some major differences. Some of them, I think, may be better with the existing pool. So for example, we have a forty-three thousand square foot pool now. Um, the proposed is eight thousand square feet. So I think this was said before, we're getting for seven point four million dollars a pool of the fifth of the size. Um, currently, we have six lap lanes. That will be going down to four. So again, seven point four million for two less lap lanes. The bath house is three thousand one hundred twenty-five square feet now. The proposed is three thousand sixty. So while it may be, um, nicer, obviously, um, a bit smaller. Um, pluses with the new one is, I think the biggest plus is the splash pad. Um, I hear a lot of demand for that. I know a lot of people that go to other towns to use their splash pads. I think it's a great option, um, for the kids, um, for non-swimmers, um, obviously requires less staffing because you don't need lifeguards, or maybe, maybe fewer lifeguards. I hope you have any there. Um, and then the parking spaces, obviously, we get, um, I think about eighteen more parking spaces with the, with the new pool. So, you know, it comes down to, is that worth it? And, um, I asked Mr. Bowles last week, um, what the cost would be over the course of the bonding, because the seven point four million, obviously, you're paying interest on. And it comes to nine point four million. So when I'm talking about the pool and looking at this project, um, the number I'm looking at is nine point four million. That's the total cost over the course of the bonding. So for nine point four million, you're getting a pool that's a fifth of the size, is only used by five percent of the town currently, and only for about two months of the year. So nine point four million for something that's used for two months by five percent of the town. Um, that's, I just, I can't justify that. That is a massive expense to, um, and even if we doubled the usage for town residents, that still only brings it to ten percent of the town that's using it. So ninety percent of the town is not using this. Um,
Can I respond to a couple of those, can I respond to a couple of those things that you just mentioned to give you an idea? Because you had not, you had not been here over the last, by the way, it's been two and a half years since we started this project. Can I just share a few things to you that might be enlightening to you, uh, tonight?
Sure.
All right. You know, you talked about the size of the pool. With our, we've done surveys, research, gone to other pools, took field trips to determine in towns similar sizes to ours, what makes sense. Because as it was said earlier, when we were doing our initial research, we found out, and I think, uh, Councilman Shortell said this, we have the largest public municipal pool in the Western Hemisphere. Because that pool was at one time a pond that was just basically paved. So what we're looking at is put something in that's absolutely realistic, and this is absolutely realistic. We also looked at the four to six lap lanes. We did an enormous amount of research on that. The four lap lanes are more than sufficient for the current utilization of the pool. So a lot of the things that you're mentioning that might be on the short side, we've addressed, we've researched, we've, uh, got it out to the councilmen and to our committees. And a lot of those things that you're talking about have been addressed and addressed in a way that, you know, it just makes sense. Even, even the size of the pool house, our pool house, and I'm going to say, is absolutely disgusting in its current form. We're going to have lockers, we're going to have separate rooms for, for families to be able to address these things in today's world that we should be concerned about. We have open showers. We're not going to have open showers anymore. Uh, they call them gang showers. Nobody, nobody uses those anymore. So we're looking at the privacy and the safety of the residents when they're coming into the pool, having facilities that are more up to date, safer and more comfortable for everybody who comes. So there is an, an enormous amount of benefits to this new pool. And if I had the opportunity to sit with you one-on-one, I can go through a list that would take way too long for this meeting. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on some of those issues.
If I, if I could just jump in real quick too as well, um,
Please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Kenny Michaels, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
Um, the, the splash pad, with, with the addition of the splash pad, the intent of the splash pad is have it open during the pool season, but as well as the shoulder season. So with that being said, if we had, um, warm weather coming into May, we would have the ability to turn the splash pad on in May, um, in, in lieu of the pool, to use the splash pad for people to cool off. And then we'd have that ability to do it into, into October. So although the pool may be open just for the months of, you know, June, July, and August, um, the splash pad has the ability to be open from April to October.
Thank you. Um, and yes, I did, um, I may, maybe I misspoke in the beginning. I, I wasn't on the council when this happened. I did attend pretty much every council meeting for the past few years. So I was, I was aware of, of this, and I did follow the process. So I didn't want to make it sound like I wasn't aware of, of those things that you brought up. But thank you. Um, let me see where I left off here. Okay, so some of, some of the, um, the alternatives or the, the extra items, I would say, um, also came in much higher than I think was budgeted for in that original, the original, like booklet that was given to the council. Um, and I'm, I'm very weary of, of those costs. For example, eighty thousand dollars for the sand volleyball, um, court, that seemed like an awful lot of money. And there were a few other, um, other items like that, that, that came in much higher, um, in these bids than I think, um, any, anyone was anticipating, or at least that was discussed prior. Um, I'm also a little bit concerned, it seems that the, um, well, the new pool will obviously be ADA compliant. It seems like the existing pool might be friendlier, um, to those with physical limitations due to the larger zero depth entry. And I know a lot of, um, parents enjoy that too with, with the little kids, um, that we have this huge zero depth. And I know the new one has that, but it's a much smaller area. Um, so again, just, you know, another thing that's kind of standing out to me where I'm just thinking, you know, what are we getting for the nine point four million dollars? Um, the, the operating expenses, um, there is a savings. I don't think it's a huge savings. I think according to my math, it's just under twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Um, so again, you're, you're spending much more than that every year to, to get, you know, to get the savings. Um, so here's what I don't want to see. I don't want to see, as Counselor Shortell started off saying, that we do, um, you know, we don't do anything and then, or we vote no, and then there's no more community pool. But I think the option I'm thinking of is something in between. So obviously, I'm extremely concerned with the cost of this. I'm extremely concerned with the timing with the cost of this. Um, but I'm also concerned that I don't know if this is the, really the right project for the, the reasons I just, um, I just went through. So my idea would be that we really look into fixing what we have, renovating what we have. Because I'm not so sure that we know a hundred percent that we can't do that for a much lower price, um, until we find out. And so, and I, I do, I love the idea of the splash pad also. I think that's a lot of bang for your buck. I think even like the fanciest one came in at maybe like five hundred thousand. Um, and like Mr. Michaels was saying, you know, that extends the season. And I think that's a, that's a huge plus to this, um, to the new project. So what I would like to do would be to make a motion to postpone the vote on the bonding for sixty days, for the purpose of developing and issuing an RFP to renovate the existing community pool, including the addition of a splash pad. So I think if we put it out to RFP, we can do that within sixty days. I think that seems like a reasonable amount of time to get it out, to get it back to the council. And then we'll have independent, um, people coming to us. They can see the plan that we have now. So they're, they're looking at that. They see the things maybe we like. But they will come to us and say, here's what you can do. So maybe we do need to demolish the bath house and do a new one. But maybe we can resurface the pool and get another ten or fifteen years out of that. But I don't think we know what that option is unless we go that route. And I think by delaying it sixty days, I don't think that kills the project at all. I think it just gives us more information before we spend nine point four million dollars on this. And so that would be my motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Can she repeat the motion?
Sure. Uh, the motion is to postpone the vote on bonding for sixty days, for the purpose of developing and issuing an RFP to renovate the existing community pool, including the addition of a splash pad.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Um, Counselor Marone, before you go forward with your point of order, I think the clerk wants to make sure she has the motion for the record and
Yeah, I, I'm just not getting it. Christina, is there any way you could text that really quick to me?
Sure.
Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Marone, your point of order.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So maybe I'm mistaken, but didn't we open this with a motion?
Exactly.
There is a motion on the bond on the table.
So then how can we lay another motion on top of it?
We can, you can have a motion to later address the vote. There, we have entertained motions to table in the past. Um, she has a motion with a, with a timeline on it. Um, so we can either, uh, as I'm thinking about this, we can either continue to discuss under the guise of the motion to move this to another date, or we can, um, we can call the vote on the motion to postpone. Uh, I see Counselor Testa making all kinds of gestures.
Yeah, rudely interrupt like I normally do. But my only comment would be, I believe that the, the motion as presented is out of order. The only way to proceed according to what I assume is the intent, is to make a motion to table the existing motion and then make that kind of motion. But right now, the motion that Counselor Tata made is out of order.
Can't she make a motion to amend the current motion?
Sure, she could do that.
So it wouldn't have to table anything. And if that motion to amend fails, then it, the, the tea leaves are there, therefore put before us going forward. So
And it doesn't exactly, doesn't exactly sound like an amendment though.
It sounds more to me like a motion to table than it does
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a motion to postpone. So motion to postpone would be in order, um, and it's debatable, you know, whether we want to postpone it or not. And she's set conditions to the postponing. Um, so it is in order as far as all my Roberts rules expertise.
Not if it's not a motion to table. It's not a motion to table, it's out of order. You can't make a motion on top of an existing motion unless you make
You can't, for a motion to postpone. So actually, a motion to table, and we've probably used it wrong, is to table for the rest of the meeting or until the next meeting, kind of, to be technical, and then it dies. So when you motion postpone, you're setting specific conditions. Like in this case, she's setting sixty days.
But she's asking for whole new things, like redoing the pool, which we all know, and I believe Mike Savinelli could tell us, there is no salvageable redo of the pool. That was sort of the starting premise probably five years ago, not two and a half years ago, is
Do we have a report that, do we have a report that says that?
Hold, hold on.
We can't have this discussion.
We, uh, this, this whole discussion has gone astray. The clerk has to be, uh, keeping track of the discussion. We have, nobody recognized since Counselor Testa. And so, um,
Mr. Chairman, could I address the, uh, renovation of this pool and what we went through to take a look at that? Is that inappropriate?
Mr. Savinelli, I want to resolve this procedural debate we're having before we continue discussion. Um, so I have a plethora of opinions. I have one, looking for an amendment, two, looking for this to be declared out of order, and one opinion that is somewhat endorsing the probability that this be some type of extended version of a motion to table. Um, so the question becomes, do we entertain this as a motion to table and discuss this as a motion to table with parameters that extend the typical motion to table? Or, uh, I mean, I, I think I've got two requests for a ruling, uh, which leaves that in my court. I, I'm inclined to entertain some further discussion on this motion to, to table beyond what is typical of Robert, Roberts rules with a sixty-day extension condition. And Counselor Testa, I'm going to allow you speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keep it plain and simple. I, any discussion of what Counselor Tata wants to propose, uh, needs to, needs to be put on hold. I don't, I do not believe that you can make a motion to table with, with an, with an amendment to that, or an, an attachment to that, that's another motion. That's a conditional table. You, you vote, you, you make a motion to table, or you don't. You can't discuss anything else except a motion that is currently on the table without, or unless you make an amendment to that motion as Counselor Fishby referred to. However, and I don't see how any things that was a part of the motion Counselor Tata made could be considered an amendment to the original motion. Because it's not related to it. So, very simple. We are in a position where if there are enough people that are not happy with this moving forward, and they want to consider something else, they have two options. They vote no on this motion, or they vote to table this motion. And I believe, according to Roberts rules, those are the only two options you have. Um, that's my personal opinion. And for whatever it's worth, I would, I would vociferously oppose any attempts to do it any different way. Thank you.
So I suspect if I call a vote on the motion to table, your vote is no.
Probably.
Probably.
Yes, of course.
All right. Um, what I am going to do is I'm going to entertain this as a motion to table. And if it passes, we'll, we'll bring this up on another agenda as soon as reasonably possible. If the motion to table fails, then we will continue discussion on the bond motion that is on the floor. Counselor Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have no problem with where we are procedurally. I just, it was conditioned on an RFP, um, which, you know, I think we need to discuss whether or not that's doable in sixty days, um, because maybe we're putting together a motion that is impossible to meet. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
And that's, that's a good point. That would be a topic for, uh, a subsequent agenda. So
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention one thing that I think the
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Savinelli. Excuse me. Mr., this is the clerk. Who's second, who's going to be seconding the motion to table?
It was Laughlin.
Thank you.
Mr. Savinelli.
My point is, we have a sixty-day window on this bid that we just received to do the pool. So in thirty days from now, we will, if we don't have the pool bid entered, we will have to go back out to the entire bid process again. I think that needs to be considered while you guys are considering how to vote with this.
Thank you, Mr. Savinelli. Uh, I'm going to entertain this as a motion to table. And Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. I'm, I'm sorry, but the motion, as it was made, carries with it conditions. And if it's accepted as a motion to table, by approving it, you're already, you're agreeing to all the other things she said.
I don't believe we are. I think that has to be flushed out at a subsequent meeting.
No, no. The motion has to be changed.
No, no, it's not. It's simply not a motion to table. It was a motion with specific conditions attached to it, to go forward and do things. And if we accept it as a table, you're also accepting that we're going to go forward with all the things she suggested. The simplest thing is just withdraw the motion. Make a motion to table, then take it from there. That way, there's no, there's no confusion.
She's expressed what her intentions are should the motion to table be granted. That's how I am interpreting it.
No, her wording says differently. I don't, this is not, no disrespect to Counselor Tata, of course. I'm just talking about the wording of the motion.
It, it is a motion. If you set a condition, it's the difference between tabling and postponing is that postponing usually has a condition and tabling has no condition. It's just you table it and that's it. Postponing is setting a condition, which she's setting 60 days, which she's saying, you know, she thinks or would like to have the RFP drawn on four. So it's, it's a motion to postpone the discussion. And you can postpone things indefinitely if you want to kill it completely forever. Tabling is a limited scope that within itself contains an actual time frame. It's within the meeting. I mean, so everybody's on a computer now. Everybody can motion, or can Google motion to postpone versus table. If everybody wants to take a second to look it up. I mean, it's just, that's just the, the way, the way it goes.
Respect that. All I'm saying is there is wording in this postponement, as you want to call it, that says we're going to do an RFP. Who is typing?
That's Counselor Fishbine.
Sorry.
Mike, that would be helpful.
Can I just weigh in? The con, the intent of what's happening. Why don't we just pull back, withdraw the motion, make a motion to table? Then, then there's no argument about where we're going from here. You're going to get the same result, the exact same result on the vote.
Thank you, Counselor Testa. Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counselor Testa mostly because how the record will reflect. The record will reflect that a motion was made with conditions. If the, if the record does not reflect that the chairman converted that into a straight motion to table, then we would have a problem procedurally. So I, I do agree with, with Counselor Testa. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I've repeatedly said that I'm entertaining this as a motion to table. She, she's expressed what she wants. Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, just to, to get back to Mr. Shortell's point earlier. If we table this tonight for 60 days, the whole project is dead. As much as we want to pretend like we're going to do something else with it, we're not. We, we've already explored all the options with regard, you know, Mrs. Tata has every right to ask these questions. The rest of us do not, because we've been around through the whole planning process. So to come out now at the 11th hour at the bonding meeting and say we don't have enough information is just ludicrous. So if we postpone 60 days, this is gone and dead forever and we get no pool. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Laughlin.
Uh, thank you. So I had a question that pertained, that either Mr. Savinelli or Kenny Michaels can, can answer maybe. If, if we accept the bid tonight, the bond, if we don't delay it, let's say, what happens next? So when is demolition, when is construction? What kind of timetable have we been presented as part of all this?
Our timetable was a shovel in the ground June 1st. So we started the process June 1st of this year.
And then what?
Which would give us the opportunity, would give us the opportunity to have the pool open in 2021. Because we need the warmer weather to do the demolition. Working with concrete is not a good time to start doing that during the winter. So our goal, and we have a complete timetable on this that we've shared with almost everybody, and June 1st was the date we were hoping to have a shovel in the ground, as they say.
And Kenny Michaels, just chiming in, Counselor Laughlin, if we do delay this, if we push the start to say August or September, it becomes more of a challenge. So we lose the 2020 swim season. And then we'll potentially, or more than likely, lose the 2021 swim season. Because concrete work, we probably have to be delayed through the winter months because it's not the ideal time to do it, weather permitting. So we just need to keep that in mind as well, that we could potentially be losing two full swim seasons.
And then, and Counselor Fishbine started to say it earlier, and, and we've asked, and I've talked to Counselor Fishbine about it too. I knew the filtration system was, was garbage at this point, or every year we're afraid it's not going to work. Is that just kind of, we've all, we've reached that point after all these years? Or was there an actual report or analysis or study done of the pool? Or did that, when the engineers came in to look at, the architect came in, whoever came in, were they like, yeah, this is absolutely garbage, there's no way it's going to work? Like, was there an actual report done? Or it's just kind of a combination of all of, all these different, you know, Public Works, Park and Rec, all these assessments done from working on the pool every year?
Well, I think part of it was the age of the equipment is at a point where it's basically seen its, seen its life. Now, it could last another two years, four years. We really don't know, but-
No.
It's 20-plus years old, which is pretty much seen its, its day. And to even consider using that going forward for any, as, as an additional savings is not. Saw, we saw people come through with a walkthrough, and we were all there for that. And we saw some people kind of rolling their eyes going, oh my God, look at this stuff. So I think it's consensus with most of the people who've been involved in the project that the filtration system is, I'd say maybe on its last two legs, if it was a four-legged animal. Kenny, do you agree with that?
Kenny Michaels, yes, I, I do. Counselor Laughlin, a lot of it becomes, is, is a combination of assessment from Public Works, assessment of what we've gotten from the architect firm. A lot of the filtration and piping is underground. So in order to replace any leaking pipes or any of the filtration piping, that concrete and blacktop will have to come up, which at that point, you, you might as well just rip it all up.
Right. And then I was getting dropped out when Counselor Shortell was, was starting and speaking. But, so I don't know if this, this was covered or it was part of motion. Can we say like, okay, we're going to do all this, but we're not going to do the volleyball court, or we're not going to do this, like, we're just saying the bonding right now? And like, can we make the volleyball court and Eagle Scout project for the summer or something? Like, I'm trying to get a handle on that as well.
That's why we put those items as alternates. Because these are items that can be taken out, you know, as we go along. I mean, you know, the comment about the $80,000 volleyball court. When we looked at all the bids, they were all, you know, relatively high. Every one of them, we thought was a lot of money. But, you know, Mike Fortuna, who is our architect, we talk about proper drainage, the depth you have to dig it so you don't have the problems with frost. So it's a little more than digging a square and throwing sand, then I guess. But then again, $80,000 is a lot of money. I'm not going to dispute that, you know? So yes, we can. We can approve the bond and talk about the alternatives. And I think there is an alternate, there are four of them in there that we, we looked at. So yeah, we can certainly consider that, yeah. I mean, the, you know, the number one, the two, two most item, biggest items are the, you know, the $5-point-something-million to do the project, the pool, the showers, the bathhouses, and the splash pad. Those are the two major areas. The other four, we could certainly talk about.
And then for those add-ons, is that something you have to come back to us for? Can the Park and Rec Commission or Department or Mayor's Office, like, who handles the, the final trigger pull on that?
That's a good question. I, I do know that there's a couple, one of the items is the, one of them I believe is the slide. And that's one that, if we don't do it now, we won't be able to do it because you'd have to start breaking up the base of the, the pool and stuff. So that's one item that we probably couldn't put off. So I think that decision can be made as we go along with either the council, the mayor, or whomever is going to have that ability to direct that.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm, I'm, thank you for all the work you guys done. I've been a proponent of the pool since we've been talking about this. Obviously, I'm concerned about the timing of it all. I wasn't foreseeing a global pandemic by any means. A lot of my questions are paused to, to give it a bit of a delay was to kind of give us time to see how things and how Wallingford was recovering and panning out. I know it doesn't affect this budget, but what we're doing is we're, we're putting, we're creating something we have to pay for in the next budget, next budget too, going on. I know, I know. I mean, if I was rolling the dice now, I'd like to think, or I'd, I'd hope, I would bet that Wallingford was going to snap back fast, that our businesses would, would do well and that people, if they had to close and were reopening, would come to Wallingford for a variety of reasons. The timing is just horrible. So, and, and I used to do kind of construction project, not kind of. I used to do construction project management. So I understand the, the timelines and the, and the windows, I guess is the word I'm looking for, in getting that in. So I'm just, I'm looking to kind of feel better about the whole thing. And it's a lot of money coming in, way more than, than we thought. So therein lies my hesitancy in, in an immediate decision right this second. I, I do think it's a good project going forward. I'm, I'm okay with the plan versus a lot of other people. But the timing is just rough for me. And I'm, and that's what I'm grappling with now, is I'm trying to make, make up my mind.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Who's talking?
Jim Bose, Controller.
All right. Jim, can I ask you to step back a minute? Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to rule on Counselor Tata's motion. Pursuant to Robert, Roberts Rules of Orders, it is a proper motion to postpone citing a definite event. You can look at the 11th edition, page 186. So I know Counselor Tata wants to speak on her motion. I know Counselor Morganstein wants to speak, and Counselor Shortell wants to speak. So, Mr. Bose, can you wait while we hash this issue out, please?
Absolutely, but I, I just want to bring it, I could just do it very, very quickly if you don't mind. And I, I thank you, Councilmember, for your intelligence. The 60-day period that Mike Savinelli mentions starts from the day of the bid opening, not from today, not from tonight. So we basically, I believe, Mike, those bids were open on April 7th?
Yes, correct.
Kenny Michaels, April 2nd, Jim, 2nd.
April 2nd. So you've got basically till June 2nd, unless the contract, the apparent law bidder agrees to extend his terms for a longer period of time, which on occasion does happen. You know, we, we can't tell you sitting here tonight if that would happen. We'd have to contact them tomorrow. But just to let you know that the clock has already ticked by, you know, pretty close to a month already. That's, that's enough. I just wanted that out there, just to, you know, not to, not to disrupt any flow of discussion, but just to keep that in your minds. Thank you.
It's out there. Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I did a motion to postpone as opposed to table, according to my understanding of Roberts Rules, was because I am concerned that if I simply made a motion to table with no conditions, that some of the other counselors might fear that this was going to kill the project. That's not what I was trying to do. What I'm trying to attempt is to just get information that could potentially, possibly save us millions of dollars. Now, maybe it doesn't. Maybe, you know, we go to RFP, it comes back that they can't, you know, nothing is salvageable, and then we still have this project that we can do. But what, I don't see the harm in waiting, you know, a little bit more time, doing some more research, and finding out for sure, is this the only option we have? Is, you know, with the bonding, is 9.4 million the only option we have? And so that was the spirit of the motion, which is why it was a motion to postpone and not a motion to table. Because I, the motion to table, I don't want it to just die. I want us to get that information. And so that was what the motion was for. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein.
Okay, so, point of order. Mr. Chairman, you think that we're asking to table, and Mrs. Tata is still saying that she wants a motion to postpone?
No, I've clarified. I've, it's, I've clarified. It's a motion to postpone pursuant to Roberts Rules, and she's, she's tied it to a definite event.
Okay. So what I have to say, I thought that Mr. Shortell and then the subsequent people in favor spoke very well, and I didn't really think I was going to need to have to say a lot, because I felt like it was said. But here we are. So community pool. This community has had all these years some form of a pool. I think now more than ever, families that live in Wallingford or families that want to buy a home in Wallingford or family, friends of people that live in Wallingford deserve to have for adults, children, seniors, every age, something available. We are a world-class town when it comes to our seniors. We invest a lot in a lot of social agencies. This is an investment in our future at a time when our future is looking, you know, a bit frightening. And so I think actually now more than ever, this is what we need. I, I think addressing the idea of any repair to the existing pool, you know, I, I sat in when I had some time off at some of the meetings of the pool committee. It, it, it's not savable, it's not salvageable. And we've been throwing good money after bad for several years now. We repaint every few years, and it just chips away. You know, if you have a crumbling infrastructure, paint does not adhere to it. You know, there's just any number of reasons. And again, being a town that has a destination, I think when you talk about businesses coming back in Wallingford, Wallingford is going to be coming back much better if we have something additional that draws people to Wallingford, a highly functional, not just a pool, but a three-season park. This, this is going to be a destination. This is an investment. And, you know, changing the total amount to this bigger number based on, yeah, anytime you take a bond or you take a mortgage, the actual amount you pay becomes a larger number because there is interest. But the real figure of $17 a year for taxpayers is well worth it to get something that our community is going to be benefiting from. Because, yes, I want to see our taxpayers not be burdened. And at times when it, it's difficult. So let's make those adjustments in other places, not here. And all we are talking about tonight is this bonding amount of money. So I strongly am going to oppose any postponement, any looking into anything different, any reopening of an RFP. And I commend the two and a half years that the pool committee took. Because what was it, Mr. Savinelli? 10 years that the prior pool commission spent? And no offense to them, it just was the way it was. Five or eight or 10 years that they met and then never anything happened. You guys, in two and a half years, have brought us an excellent, excellent what we're going to be buying here and did it in a very good matter of time. And to second-guess you guys is completely inappropriate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, if Mr. Savinelli might answer the previous committee's amount of time, I think he probably knows that answer.
It was in the 90s, and they had two committees. The first committee went a few years, and they all bailed out when they couldn't get anywhere. And the second committee came in. And we did some renovation work back then, which cost over a couple of million dollars. And here we are again, because the structure itself was never deemed, you know, you don't have a pool made out of asphalt. It, it's just, it, it's a hole. I mean, it's a whole paved, and it's not really even considered a, a pool as we know it, so.
All right, thank you. Counselor Shortell. Counselor Shortell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some quick reactions. I want to thank Counselor Tada for her comments and for her, I think, creativity. I do appreciate that. So I just want to acknowledge that. To a couple of things, Counselor Laffin, Vice Chair Laffin had talked about, actually, I was gonna ask the same question he asked, which was procedurally after tonight. If this were to pass, what happens with some of these elements? Do they get added or not? I would just say for the record, you know, when I made the motion for the full, my intention was to do all of it, just to be clear. Others may disagree. My intention is, let's pay for all of it. Let's make this as nice as it can be. Just want to clarify that. I just want to clarify the numbers that have been thrown around a little bit. So that 9 million cost with interest, that is the high, that is the low bid, that is correct. I have the figures right here from Mr. Bose, because Mr. Bose did provide this number. So the average per year, for the average taxpayer with that full 9 million is $19.46 a year in the average household. Important to note, we talk about COVID and certainly a year from now, let's say we did delay it a year from now, because I know people, maybe some people are uncomfortable being, as they said, in a pandemic. Next, in the next, the first year of this, so would that be in this year's budget? It would be in next year's budget. So it would be starting July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, the taxpayers would pay $3.43 on the average for this pool in that year. And so presumably, I just think it's important to note in the schedule that Mr. Bose laid out of the average household, how that would go. And again, I appreciate all the comments. I just think delaying this, it's only gonna cost more delaying it. And I think we'll end up right back where we are. But I appreciate the debate. We don't have to agree, but I think this is a great debate for us to have, because it is a lot of money. But I think it's a worthy project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this has been my first opportunity to talk on this tonight. A lot of the stuff has already been said. I'm very concerned about the sand volleyball court thing. It's one of the things I've been tracking through this. You know, last time we had a meeting about this, the representation was that it was gonna be about $15,000. And I had a problem with that. And now we get numbers and I think it's the middle bid is $80,000 for a sand volleyball court. So something's just not, I mean, I think before that, the bid for the sand volleyball court, the number we were dealing with, was like $3,500. So I got problems there. I have a lot of problems with my feet being held to the fire to spend $9 million or authorize $9 million in bonding with a 30-day deadline. I just got a lot of problems with that. I'm supportive of the motion ultimately. You know, I do share, Counselor Morganstein was talking about a pool for all ages. But I don't know any seniors that are gonna use a splash pad, quite frankly. So we're taking the existing pool and we're making it smaller. We're adding a splash pad, which is going to attract the youth. I don't disagree. But one of the things we've talked about this a while ago with this project was having an area with exercise equipment for seniors. That's going by the wayside. Somebody, not me, made that decision. So, yeah, I think that this project should be for all people. But we're making the pool smaller, which is shunning seniors, basically. We're adding this splash pad, which is not gonna invite more seniors. And we're not adding that accoutrement for seniors and middle-aged individuals. You know, when I'm down in Florida and I'm running along the beach, they have plenty of places where they have these exercise things for seniors. And people are using them. We don't have one park in this town that has that kind of accoutrement. We have plenty of parks in the town. A lot of them are empty, quite frankly. So part of this project is to put another park that is gonna get the utilization, I guess, that the other parks get, except for the splash pad and the pool. It's a lot of money. And ultimately, you know, we're looking at numbers. I was just running some figures here. If we did bonds at 5% over 20 years, which is usually what we do, interest rate variable, each year, it's an added expenditure of $472,500. And some people talk about, well, you're bonding it and they try and think to convince the public that all you're paying is the interest. No, you've gotta pay principal and interest. So you've got all of this money plus interest over that period of time. So go to the public and tell them that for the next 20 years, we're gonna raise the expenses by 472. It's right around there. It's, yeah, $472,500 a year without the other things that we have to pay for. So, I mean, at this point, I would be happy to see some sort of report that's done that says, you know, what can we do with the existing pool? Because that hasn't been done, to my knowledge. And we go forward and we have more work on this. You know, one of the problems that I've also had is the process. When we did the school roofs, if I recall correctly, the council, well, made a group, made the committee. I think the last time that the pool was done, my understanding is that the council created the committee. With the roof committee, we actually had appointees on the roof committee as part of that process. You know, I've had a problem with the process from the beginning. So, but I am ultimately in favor of the motions before us. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Marone?
Cut it out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things on the motion.
Give me a second, Joe.
Oh, how about now? All right.
Yes, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Fishbein raises some interesting points about other options that he would like to see in the pool. Mr. Fishbein's a great guy, but I would say that if it was a $4 million pool, he's still, he's still not gonna vote for it. So I don't know that it matters whether we have the senior accoutrements or not. The other thing is whether you agree with the group of experts that were on this. These are the people that volunteered their time to come up with a better solution for the pool. And I'm not gonna sit here and second-guess what they've decided to put in the plan and what they haven't. You know, to me, this issue is really not about the pool at all. This is about the haves and the have-nots in town. Wallingford, growing up, growing up in Wallingford, Wallingford was a very working-class town. And it's become more affluent over the course of my lifetime. And many people have private pools and many people don't need a pool. However, there's a segment of our society that could use a pool and probably benefits from having a town pool. And I just don't think that it makes sense to take this away from people when we've had it for so long. So I understand that a lot of people aren't gonna use it, but a lot of people are going to use it. If the concern is money, then let's find somewhere else in the budget to cut. If we need to cut $17 per household out of the budget, I would be in favor of layoffs in different areas or other things, that we close downtown departments if we have to. But to me, the pool is a vital part of our town. We've had a pool forever. We should continue to have one that directly benefits the residents. You know, I agree with the smaller government thing, but one of the functions of government is to maintain parks. And the pool is a park. And so to just let it go by the wayside. And the delay of 60 days is gonna kill the whole project. I don't care what anyone says. Because it's not like in 60 days, things are gonna change so radically that we're gonna say, yep, now's a great time to spend the money. You know, in more than 10 years of public service, we've never had a year where we've said, yes, we have plenty of money, let's buy what we want. Right? So that argument is just old and tired. Either the project's worthwhile or it's not. And I'm saying this project is worthwhile and it's worthwhile to move forward now. So let's not wait and delay, you know, 60 days for, to buy us time to cancel it later on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from Ms. Bjorkman and then Counselor Zandry and then Counselor Morganstein. So Ms. Bjorkman, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just wanted to give Councilwoman Fishbein a few statistics regarding its senior population. I do realize that our seniors are an essential, you know, group to our community. Just so you know, in 2019, we sold 951 tag to 0-12 age students, 13-17-year-old kids, 124, ages 13-62, 1,102, ages 63-plus, 236. So our main demographic that we're serving at community pool, which is very accessible for the seniors, is really the 13-16, 62-year-old people. So I think the existing pool that we have suffices as far as accessibility for seniors. And I don't think that the new pool that we're going to be presenting or we are presenting is gonna differ from that. So I kind of disagree with you. I think the seniors, the senior center is, runs exceptional courses, programs. The library runs exceptional courses. We run a senior men's basketball league, senior men's softball league. And Kenny can elaborate a little more on that. We have extensive senior programming in the community. And I think this is just one more area that we can offer the senior population. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to direct a couple of questions to Mr. Bose, if he's on the line. I believe he was prior. I just want, I've heard a couple of different numbers about how much we're borrowing, what we're gonna end up paying. And we all understand, anything that we bond, you ultimately pay more. But I think a lot of times people mention, I've heard $9 million mentioned a couple of times. We're not borrowing 9 million. We're borrowing, we're bonding up to $7,470,000. Is that the correct number?
I was asked to put a scenario together with regards to $7.4 million. That's scenario, that's scenario one. It's close enough.
Yes, okay. So I want to make sure the general public understands that's what we're gonna borrow. What are we ultimately going to pay back? That's closer to the $9 million that you're hearing tossed around. Again, to Mr. Bose, can you please tell me if we bond out for about 20 years, approximately, your best guesstimate at what rate of interest that would be?
Well, the bonds are put out the bid. So you're gonna get different interest rates for each year. So right now, the rates are running, are very, very low. But they're running at 2 to 2 and 3/4 percent, depending on the day you're in the market, depending upon the quality of your paper. We tend to be very highly rated, which is good. And, you know, it's, it will vary. In the examples that I used, some of the assumptions I made was, I just used 2 to 2 and 3/4 percent based upon issuing bonds in two separate installments or two separate issues, if you will. And I think my spreadsheets, very long spreadsheets, like three sections to it on a legal sheet of paper, I guess, denotes that.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. I just wanted to get that for my own notification. So just for clarity, again, I bring this back to all of us that are considering our votes this evening and to the general public that's listening. We're gonna borrow 7.4 million. It's not gonna be at 5%. It's gonna be at 2 to 2 and 3/4%. If we don't do it now, we do it next year or the year after, if we ever, ever do it, interest rates are gonna go up. Costs are gonna increase. We talk about how bad the economy is right now. People are looking to do work. We're getting the best bids we're probably ever gonna get. The cost of petroleum products, which a lot of this equipment is based upon, is through the floor right now. We are never gonna see a day with better prices and better bonding rates in our lifetime. I can't emphasize that enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein, did you want to speak again?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Jason. Yeah, our costs actually right now are not only better than they're gonna be in the future, but yes, much, much lower than previously. So a couple of things were pointed out to me in the interim. This current pool is in violation by leaking thousands of gallons of water. It's in violation for the amount of parking it has. And as previously mentioned, it's been proven that it is not fixable. So I just want to reiterate the fact that if we delay this, do we want to have another wooden caplin on our hands where it gets delayed? It's not gonna happen. And you're gonna have this big eyesore in this area forever. And again, what that does to the economy here in Wallingford is not a good thing. I just don't believe that if we do any kind of postponement, that this will fly. We need to get this project going, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the motion to postpone, all I'm asking is 60 days to get information that we don't have, that can potentially save the taxpayers millions of dollars. That's what the motion to postpone is. I am not against the pool. I'm not, you know, I don't want to see Wallingford not have a pool because we have one right now. I want to see it have a great pool. But if we can do it for millions of dollars less, we don't know that. We don't know that right now for certain. And so it's just another idea. I'm asking for 60 days to potentially save millions of dollars. And I think that that is fair to the taxpayer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, first, Madam Clerk, would you call the role on the...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is the mayor speaking. I just think, you know, I want to clarify one thing. You know, we're talking a lot about the cost to the taxpayer, but we're not including business in that. Now, we are in a situation now that I have not seen in my time in office. Not only are we deferring taxes so that people don't have to pay them right away, but we have unemployment through the roof and we have businesses that are boarded up. Now, whatever cost must be assumed by these parties, we'll include the business community paying most probably a much higher amount per business than what we talk about on the residential side. But there's a serious economic problem. And whether that will clear up quickly or not is anyone's guess. But we have revaluation happening this year too, which means that if commercial industrial diminishes in value because of the conditions, that could have an effect on the residential side as well. There are a lot of unknowns. The money side of this cannot be underestimated.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand there are some connectivity issues that are going on. Hopefully, we can get Counselor Marone back on. Because, yeah, there he is.
Clerk, you should come back.
Thank you. All right, we're all here. Madam Clerk, first, please call the role on the motion to postpone.
Okay, on the motion to postpone. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Morganstein? No. Shortell?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
I vote yes, but the motion to postpone has failed.
Correct.
And now, please call the role on the bond.
Give me one second, please. Thank you. Okay, on the bond. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
I vote no. Nonetheless, the motion passes.
It does.
And... And, uh, the ordinance is amended, as moved. Thank you for that. We're going to go back to item five on the agenda. Uh, that is fire department's bid waiver. May I have a motion on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve a bid waiver request for Van Cord Division of TBNG Incorporated to conduct a network vulnerability assessment of the fire department's software network at a total cost of seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council Chertelle. Chief Hyde Guard, I see you out there. You have to light up your mic.
I think I did, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, so just a brief description, uh, description of the project. The fire department has twenty-one workstations located in four different buildings. And that structure is fairly simple and basic. Um, other than that, all the computers are running through one server. The complexity begins where our software programs need to be accessed remotely for functionality, such as patient care reporting, pre-fire incident planning, fire marshal's inspections, and instant reporting. To accomplish these tasks, we utilize over thirty iOS platform or Apple tablets. Uh, there's a complex network in making these devices function properly and safely. In addition to that, our system operates in conjunction with the police department's system. Um, our information flow starts with the dispatch center, who initiates, uh, a CAD or computer-aided dispatch, a push of information, and our system grabs that using uh, NetMotion, JAF, and other programs to make the iPads run. Our system is completely home-built, uh, with some input from various IT professionals along the way. Uh, this request is based on our desire to use the same public safety internet, uh, IT group as the police department for continuity. It would be difficult, as well as cost prohibitive, to have a different vendor learn everything about the police department computer system so that they can understand how ours would interact with theirs. We also are concerned about the security of introducing a new vendor into this mix. Um, we need to have our system evaluated to make sure we pose no risk to the police department system, as well as to make sure our system is properly designed to protect our operation and the sensitive information that we, we have. So thank you for your consideration on this. And, uh, the three chiefs are on, myself, Deputy Chief Setinar, and Deputy Chief Wilson, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a question from Council Tada. You have the floor, Council Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, Chief. Um, I just have one question. Your, um, the letter that was written to the mayor, um, you just said, as we transition completely to this platform and with the hope of funding for our computer network, we're asking for this bid waiver. So I'm assuming that means the network, um, the computer network that's in the, uh, budget, the upcoming budget? And so I just want to, if I'm correct on that, if you were not to get that, then what would happen to this money? And just please correct me if I'm wrong on what you meant by that.
No, absolutely, you are exactly right. Um, what we have is our old system, the twenty-one computers, the desktops, or the workstations that we use are Windows Platform Seven. And it's cost prohibitive for us to convert them or bring them up to the Windows Ten. So therefore, they're vulnerable. It's cost prohibitive to upgrade. The cost basically is a loser on those old computers. They're between five to seven to eight years old. So their, their lifespan is short. And again, updating the memory to make them Windows Ten compatible is a prohibitive thing. So it's a great opportunity before we do that install, again, if the funding is approved, um, to put those twenty-one computers into the system. It's the best time to look at our overall functionality, our system, how all things work integrated. It's something that's never been done in our computer system. Again, I call it home-built. But we built this up over the years without it being designed or evaluated by a professional. So we just see that the two are definitely interconnected.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. So if, I'm just trying to think, like, worst-case scenario for you. If you were not to get the, the new computers, then what would happen to this money? Would, I mean, we still would want to approve it tonight, and then you just wouldn't be using it, correct?
Um, actually, we would go ahead and use this because the, um, the idea, the majority of what we're looking at would not, the desktops don't completely negate the value of having this, um, system evaluation for vulnerabilities. Uh, the risk of hacking, the risk of, um, malware, virusware, all those things are major concerns to us, as well as we want to make sure that our system poses no risk to the police department in that, uh, how we're interconnected. We, we believe we're, we're safe. But we would like to have, it's, it's prudent to have this system evaluated by a professional group that understands public safety, um, IT.
Okay, so basically, either way, this is still, this is still something you'd be using, whether, you know, whichever way the budget went with the computer, the new computer network?
That's correct, yes, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Uh, Councilor Zandry has a question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, Chief. I just have a quick couple of questions on this. This vulnerability assessment, what, what's the timeframe on it? Are they going to be there a week, uh, five bit, you know, uh, less number of days? Curious the number of days they're going to be executing this work.
That I don't have an answer to unless one of my deputy chiefs has a better understanding of the timeline. Um, I don't know the answer to that for a length of time that they'd have to spend, um, looking at the system.
And, uh, you, you mentioned the, the systems that are in use right now and, and just kind of drop, jumping over, um, to what Council Tada was asking. So you're talking about doing the pen testing on your networks and the operating systems that are utilized on those clients? Is that what this is going to be?
Um, unfortunately, you know more about computers than I do, so.
And that's, and that's, and that's why I was asking, partly why I was asking the question, because the Windows Seven operating system isn't even supported anymore. It's, it, you're unable to get security updates for it. So that's why I was kind of curious if this is going to dovetail it all into those replacement systems that you were talking about.
Yes, that's the intent. Um, so our biggest concern for the, um, funding that's requested through our normal budget is the replacement of the twenty-one computers, to bring them up so that they are not vulnerable. Because to your point, they are end-of-life and not upgradable. So that is a vulnerability that we don't even need a study to prove. Um, so the vendor will be most likely already making that recommendation. But it's more to look at our server, how we remotely access our server, how the information is pushed out of the CAD or computer-aided dispatch system, and how when we do patient care reports, we function to the hospital and all that connectivity. Nobody's done a full assessment of vulnerability of anybody hacking into our system or losing our data in any way, shape, or form. So this is a holistic re-review of our computer system with one of the pieces being the platform of our desktops on Windows Seven versus Windows Ten.
So is this work going to be just a pre-engagement work? Or is it going to be the actual, uh, evaluation of everything?
It is the actual evaluation. So they would give us a, a, a teardown of our system, make recommendations as to, uh, stopgaps, uh, virus firewalls, things like those programs that we may in fact already have. Are they functioning properly? Do we need other ones? And, uh, basically illustrate our system so that we can make better, uh, decisions in the future. So it is in part and parcel. It is part of what we have now, what we requested in the normal budget process. But it's, it's exactly that. It's a vulnerability assessment.
And, and is the, the bid waiver amount the entire cost that you're expecting for this?
Yes, it is.
I, I'm, I'm reading through the scope. That's an awesome price. So, um, uh, thank you for the answers because, you know, I, I guess that I'm looking through the scope right now just to double-check what I read earlier. And yeah, you're getting a lot of work done. So this, this is a, this is a very, very, uh, forward-thinking way if, if you're going to be making changes to the platform to be going about it. So I really appreciate the effort here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have to give credit because this vendor has a, a well-established relationship with our police department. So I think they did, in fact, like you're mentioning, do a favor for the town of Wallingford and, and our department.
I, I, I can, I can tell you they did.
Uh, I don't see any other notes about questions from the council. If, am I missing anything? Uh, if there's anybody in the public would like to comment, if you could, uh, enter in the chat bar that you would. I'll give it a minute or two. And I see no activity. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Fishbone.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yes.
Morone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertelle.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. Chief, thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
On to item eight, is Mr. Civitelli on the line?
I am, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Civitelli. What do you have for us?
Um, so I have a quick update. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to talk, um, talk to the residents. So at this point in time, after we last spoke, I have a few updates in terms of number of cases, some of the activity that our department has been working on. So I will start with the number of confirmed cases. As of this morning, we have two-hundred-and-twenty laboratory confirmed cases in the town, uh, eighteen fatalities at this point in time. Statewide, what we're seeing are forty-three percent of the fatalities are coming from nursing homes or long-term care facilities, which is of great concern to us. Our public health nurse has been working, uh, every day with the long-term care facilities. That has been her primary function as of late, trying to provide guidance on isolation and quarantine, checking on PPE levels, staffing levels, and has generated a daily report for our office and for other, uh, departments, emergency management purposes, for us to keep track of what the status is of those facilities. Based on some of those daily assessments, um, we, we requested a, an inspection of one of our facilities from the Department of Public Health. Uh, that was, that took place early last week. That actually yielded some changes to that facility, is my understanding. Again, I think that that just highlights some of the involvement that we have to have to a certain extent. Um, we've had a lot of questions recently regarding the recovery center at Quinnipiac Valley Center, so I was going to talk about that a little bit. Um, as it turns out in talking to them, it appears that the recovery center for COVID patients, it was initially supposed to be utilized as an acute step-down facility, as we spoke about last meeting. But it looks like at this point, based on the number of cases at Quinnipiac Valley, the state has given them the approval to move their existing residents over to that modified unit. So that modified unit was going to have thirty-four beds, uh, for the step-down unit from hospitalization. But, um, it looks like at this point, with the number of cases at Quinnipiac Valley, around thirty-two was my understanding, the last time we had checked, that most of those individuals would be moved out of that population at some point, once the center is available to be utilized. At this point, there, they still are not fully functional in that new unit. They have to still install HVAC, um, systems, as well as, they need a new circuit breaker, was my understanding, uh, based on our conversation this morning. They're looking to potentially have the facility ready this Friday or, uh, latest on Monday. So it may never be used in the beginning for what its primary intent was, based on the number of cases at the Quinnipiac Valley Center. Um, more recently too, the Department of Public Health has, is now going to be utilizing forty National Guard members who have medical backgrounds to assist in inspecting the facilities. Again, it's the State Department of Public Health who licenses the nursing homes. Uh, but we saw early on that we needed to have some involvement in what was going on. We realized that the folks in these nursing homes are the utmost risk of this virus due to the, the way it spreads. Um, another update, every Tuesday for the last three weeks, we have been picking up, uh, portions of the Strategic National Stockpile that is allocated for certain facilities here in town. Um, our staff have been going to North Haven to pick up these supplies. The supplies that we receive are specific not for long-term care facilities, but they are actually primarily for urgent care centers, primary care physicians, dialysis centers, and home health agencies. So we're the primary agency at this point to accept those resources for those agencies. And we keep a Excel spreadsheet of items received and where they were distributed to. And again, that is, uh, through the state assets that, uh, Department of Public Health is funneling down through the local health departments. Um, couple other quick updates on other items. We continue to receive a vast number of new volunteers for our Medical Reserve Corps. Again, our Medical Reserve Corps is our public health civilian response team that both has medical and non-medical volunteers. Because we are fortunate enough to have one of the functional medical reserve units in Region Two, which encompasses most of New Haven County, um, we have benefited from that in that a lot of the volunteers that are signing up are being diverted to our unit. And, um, we have a lot of, uh, volunteers at this point that are on standby to assist in various ways. More recently, the Water Division has been of great value, of great help to us. They have actually started making in their laboratory, uh, hand sanitizers. As we're all aware, there's been some supply issues and supply chain issues with hand sanitizer. The Water Division gave us our first ration that they developed based on the CDC, um, recipe, I guess we'll call it. Um, and we have ninety-four ounce bottles that we distributed to town employees this week. And it's my understanding, we're roughly going to get ninety-four ounce bottles over the next few weeks that we'll distribute as necessary. We provided our second round of surgical masks to town staff. We allocated one mask per week, per employee for five weeks. And at the end of that five-week time period, we were going to reevaluate to see what the situation is at that point. Guidance has been provided by Human Resources as of today regarding the requirements to wear a mask based on the governor's executive orders. We are still continuing on a continual basis, participating in federal, state, and regional conference calls, getting any updates that may be relevant to our community. One thing that we're stressing more now is that we are continuing to provide updates, not only through these meetings and town council, but on the town website. There's two portions of the town website that we're utilizing. It's the main launch page that has a COVID-nineteen, um, bar on it that will actually have all the documents and correspondence throughout the town. Um, and then in the Health Department page, it has specific, uh, links for the testing in Connecticut, which will show Wallingford results, as well as a section for CDC as how to protect yourself and your family, which we found has been very useful at this point. Um, we have had, in discussions with Board of Education this past week, we have a preliminary agreement with the Board of En- School Nurses to utilize them to assist with community contact tracing. As I'm sure many of you have heard, as we come out of this, a lot of the emphasis seems to be focusing on testing and contact tracing. And to that end, my understanding initially, they were discussing hiring large volumes of people to meet that need at the state level. Um, but I don't want to take that chance that that doesn't happen. So at this point, we wanted to make sure that we had some backup if indeed we became overwhelmed with some of the potential cases, case volume increasing, and the school nurses have been gracious enough to help us with that, with that need. We've also been working with, and, and from the testing side, Quest Laboratory has reached out to me, uh, the end of last week. And we've had a very interesting discussion about, uh, not only swab testing, but antibody testing for town employees. And initially, the conversation started for first responders, but when I posed the question of whether or not we could include all town employees, after some discussion, that was allotted for us to do that. The thought process behind that from my aspect was, as a primary a, entity for isolating and quarantining town employees, not only to protect the, um, continuity of operations, but also but also to protect other town employees, having a quicker turnaround time would be vital to, again, protecting town employees and to protecting the continuity of operations. So we're in the early stages of having that discussion. I think it's worth having at this point. We would be getting in on something like this earlier than most towns. So again, at this point, that's somewhat the update that I have for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Civitelli. Counselor Morganstein wanted to speak, and then Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Civitelli. So there were just a couple of things that were left outstanding last time that I'm not sure I heard you answer. So the staff at the Quinnipiac facility, did you feel comfortable in how they were shifting their staff, that they're doing it in a way that is not cross-covering from the well people to the sick people?
Correct. So Genesis was very responsive to that request. Genesis is the company that owns Quinnipiac Valley Center. They were very responsive to that request. However, based on the evolving situation, they may not need to, they may need to hire individuals, but not as many as initially intended because they're shifting, they're not bringing in more people. They're going to be shifting those to protect the other existing population within that facility. But again, if it turns out to be a step-down unit, they did agree to hire entirely separate staff to protect any potential cross-contamination from that wing and the other existing wings within that facility.
Okay, great. Yeah, and so just to give it some perspective, so I have both virtually and in-person been seeing people that I've been testing for COVID-19 or have low risks, so you say presumed COVID-19. And a nurse practitioner that I spoke with, working at two nursing homes in the region, but not in our town, used the term "my patients are dropping like flies." So we have to imagine that these are our most vulnerable population, and a lot of them, for reasons of their general health, are not going to be transferred to a hospital, are not going to be intubated, but are dying alone from this illness. Yeah. Our statistics in this state are pretty high, and it's, you know, we made the top-10 list, unfortunately, now. So we cannot let down our guard now. And that's going to bring me to the mask-wearing. I know, Mr. Civitelli, that you and Chief Wright, nobody is really enforcing that. So I would like to just take this opportunity to say, please self-enforce that. There's a reason that that is put in place. And I'd like to also say that just because you may have on a mask, you may have on gloves, the six-foot rule still applies. Wearing a mask is not 100%. And so if you're in the grocery store and you're six feet behind someone and you need to, you know, get your grocery shopping done more quickly, when you go around that person in the three-foot-wide aisle, you are not social distancing. And we and our family try to go out as little as possible. If we go out, we go to one place a day, and you wait a few days to go to another place, because you're just multiplying your risk of exposure. My other question, Mr. Civitelli, is did we get anywhere with temperatures for town workers?
So I just wanted to back up very quickly and address your last comment. Our environmental health staff, our sanitarians, who would normally be doing food inspections, obviously their roles have changed slightly. And the volume of complaints we've received regarding businesses and food service establishments, regarding mask-wearing, social distancing, the grocery stores, some of the concerns that they have in their own facilities with isolation and quarantine, our restaurant owners are not familiar with that. So we've been helping a lot with that process. And I think that now that the executive order passed recently requiring masks, we're going to see more compliance with that. But again, our sanitarian staff have been going around trying to enforce that as best we can. There's been some word from the State Health Department to modify food inspections, which is something we've never done before. They're looking at modifying the form to reflect a 10-to-15-question checklist, which would encompass the mask-wearing. I do have some concerns about that, because then we do not have a full, thorough inspection of the facility. We could always add on things. I don't want to take away from the intent of a food inspection is to protect the public. So I don't want to lose sight of the other issues as well. So we could always check for masks and check for compliance when we're doing our inspections. But, you know, I want to make sure that we keep the inspection in and of itself whole. To address your concerns with the temperature-taking, we have been unable at this point to achieve that goal. However, I will say that in the executive order through the governor, there was a recommendation for employees to take their own temperatures prior to, prior to coming to work. And the most recent memo sent out by Human Resources, we utilized that wording and provided that to town employees to make that recommendation. So as time evolves, we haven't given up that effort, but at this time, we are at least recommending to town employees that they take that initiative to do so.
Yeah, and then the other half of that is, and it sounded last time like this is more or less happening, is that people work in shifts that are the same shift of people. It's not the same as home quarantine, but you're, you know, if you are with the same community of people, if those people are not out in the community frequenting multiple places, your exposure chain, you know, shrinks a bit as well. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Civitelli. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you, Counselor Fishbein. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening.
Thank you for everything you do. I don't know if you're aware, well, are you aware of the guidance from DDS that was issued today with regard to visits at hospitals?
I'm not aware of that specifically at this point. Is there a specific portion of that that's of concern?
Well, the, up until today at least, the governor's order had been that a family member could not accompany one who went to the hospital. And some concerns were raised, particularly with autistic children. They could not have a parent accompany them. And I believe they're working through that concern. It's not to my satisfaction, but I don't know if you've had any complaints here in town with regard to that prohibition on family members accompanying those being treated at medical facilities?
Very good point. So we have had some concerns regarding your very, what you're bringing up. And a lot of times, when we see these types of executive orders written, there's other consequences that aren't really fully thought through. So an example of that would be this situation that you're describing, as well as when we're talking about the PPE drop-offs, they did not include the dentist offices. And the reason that that's unique is that, you know, the dentist offices, while a lot, many of them were closed, they're still providing care for emergency situations, but they also donated a lot of their PPE at, in, early on in this event with the thought that the supply chain would improve later on. So we made the request to DPH recently to add the dentist to that push pack, as well as, as you said, we made the recommendation that in special circumstances, a family member should be allowed to attend medical treatment based on specific situations. I think that there's exemptions to certain things, and that would certainly be one of them. I agree.
Yeah. You gave a statistic at the beginning of your report, that we had 222, I believe, persons in Wallingford that have tested positive, and of those 222, 18 had passed. Is that accurate?
Yes, as of the last count, we had, it was 220 laboratory confirmed cases with 18 fatalities. That changes by the minute.
Sure. And of those 18, you know, there's a lot of discussion about this concept of COVID-related or COVID-caused. Do you know, is there a difference here with these 18? I mean, was it all like, you know, COD, cause of death, was COVID, or were they just tested positive and then passed?
So that's a very good question, and we had some concerns about that as well, because it does impact the overall numbers. What I would say is that, based on the way that we receive the information, we only receive positive cases, and we only receive fatalities that are associated with that. So I couldn't tell you 100% either way if that was the cause of death. I think what your concern is, is that you're saying that people may have passed and then found out retroactively that they had the virus. And I think that there is some truth to that. We don't know, based on how we're receiving the data, to what, to what degree that is.
And, and do we know, are they testing for that on people that pass? So somebody has some of the symptoms, but they haven't been tested, but they passed. Do we know whether or not those people are being tested posthumously, I believe is the term?
That I could not say for sure.
Okay. The other thing I had was, I brought up the issue about the litter last week. And I got to tell you, I've had quite a few people contact me between our last meeting and then yesterday, agreeing that even without the COVID, it is litter, and it's got to go away. And I'm just, you know, have any efforts been done to address that situation?
Yes, we reached out to the Hartford Current. I can forward you the information we received from them. Because a lot of their offices are working remotely, to our understanding, we've gotten limited feedback on that. But again, we, we did actually issue them, we provided them a copy of the litter ordinance and how that works here in town, where unsolicited mailings are not permitted to be left at either the front steps or in the driveway. So they are aware of the situation.
Okay, because I did get it.
Yeah, we ran into a similar issue with the Advocate recently as well, I believe it was, not too long ago.
Okay, because I will report to you that I got another one this week. So.
Fair enough. Thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is Counselor... Shertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Mr. Civitelli, just a quick question, which I will preface by saying I just stepped away for minutes. You may have already answered this, so I apologize if it's duplicative with something you've already said. Of the 200-plus cases in town, are there any of those cases town hall employees, or town employees in general? Do we have any data on that?
The, the data we receive for, from the electronic system, only provides us information for those who live in town. However, you know, at this point, we have not had any town hall employees test positive. There have been employees that have, very few, that have tested positive across all the town. But I can count them on one hand.
All right, so you're saying there are employees, there are some employees, you said very few, that have tested positive, but they don't physically, where, can you identify, they're not in town hall, or they're, they're just... I'm not trying to get to anyone's personal information. What I'm trying to get is just looking at data like that to understand if we have to shift any of the measures we've already taken. Is, you know, in terms of further social distancing, you know, stuff like of staggered shifts, you know, all that stuff you've already talked about to a certain extent. That's all I'm getting at.
Yes, I understand. So I think the most effective tool that we have, we've been using quite well to this point, thankfully, is the isolation and quarantine. So I could just walk you through very briefly as to how this would work. An example is I get a call from a supervisor, and they say that they had an employee who has fever and cough. At that point, the employee is removed from work, and pending a positive or negative test would either be permitted back to work or not. But at that point, when we are alerted of the presumptive case or an actual confirmed case, we look back 48 hours from when the time the town employee was last here. So if we had a town employee who was a suspected case on a Wednesday, we would go back 48 hours to Monday morning to see who they came in contact with. So that's the contact tracing part of it. And then in that process, we would try and remove, alert those employees of the potential exposure, and potentially either remove them based on the level of exposure. It gets pretty in-depth. Some of the decisions that we've made, some of the situations have been very complex, but we use the CDC risk assessment form for each individual scenario. I don't know if that somewhat answers your question, but in terms of actually social distancing, I can speak for town hall specifically. We went to several offices here in town, and we set up a little task force, and we actually evaluated, I believe, with six offices in town hall where we need to provide more social distancing. And Public Works has been great. They've been a very good partner in all of this, whether it was installing the partitions in some of the offices, changing the cycles in the HVAC units to provide cleaner air more frequently. They moved some of the employees to provide more social distancing. So in terms of the other utilities, I know that we've spoken to some of the utilities about how they could try and manipulate their workspaces to provide that distancing at this point.
Okay. No, I appreciate, I appreciate all of that. So just to wrap it up, then, they're basically, to go back to your, at the beginning of your example, you're saying you get a call from a supervisor. So is there like, that's a standing protocol right now? If I'm a supervisor in the town of Wallingford, and I see somebody has symptoms, I'm going to call you, I'm going to call you? Is that...
Yes. So they will call me basically 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I've taken phone calls all the time. And initially, I think, in the early onset of the virus, it was, as we were trying to work our way through that, we received a lot of phone calls. And I think now that people are doing very well with social distancing, people are having a better understanding of how this virus functions, I think the town is positioned very well to respond to this. At this point, our employees are responding to this event very well, I must say. And when we've had to make tough decisions as to who gets quarantined, who gets isolated, certain areas have to be shuttered for a short period of time. Everybody's been fantastic about understanding the why and to protect everybody else around them.
Great. Thank you for the update. Thank you for all the, all the work you're doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Shertel.
Thank you. In connection with that, Counselor Morganstein did remind me that this Friday, May 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Wallingford Police Department is hosting a drive-through food and toiletry drop-off at Police Headquarters to assist those families in Wallingford who are in need as a result of this COVID-19 pandemic. Officers will be stationed in the parking lot of the police department to accept donations of non-perishable food and toiletry items. And those who are donating will not need to leave their vehicles and can exit the parking lot onto Center Street. And any donations will be welcome. Thank you, Mr. Civitelli, for your presentation. This is all we have on this agenda. Before I do log off this meeting, we will be going into an executive session, and we will not come back into public session after that. So this will end the meeting. But before I do log off, I just want those of us who have been sitting through this entire meeting to understand that the interference that we experienced earlier is going to be investigated by the Wallingford Police Department. We're not going to tolerate this. We have gone to great lengths to have public meetings during this difficult time. And people who showed no respect to this council and disrespect to this council by interfering the way that was done, you'll be found and prosecuted. And I hope to never see that again. And we'll see some of you tomorrow night at the public hearing on the budget. Thank you, everyone, and good night. Thank you, everyone, and good night.